Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. We're here to conduct a public hearing and consider the following on December 8th at 6:15 at City Hall. We have four items that we'll be considering in this public hearing, and I will read them for the record. The first one is the ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet approximately 10 acres of property at Watermark Way, map 73, part of parcel 21, and the property being located within the city's urban growth boundary, and to approve the plan of services. Our second item, which is an ordinance to rezone property located at Watermark Way, approximately 10 acres, map 73, parcel 21, from Wilson County R1 to RS 20. The third is an ordinance to accept the donation for the Mount Juliet Parks Department and allocate the funds for the park's special events. And the fourth item to be considered is an ordinance to amend 2425, excuse me, 202452 to grant relief for certain conditions of the previously approved preliminary master development plan, last amended November 2024, to allow full access driveways on collector roads between Golden Bar Gateway and Beckwith Road, and to avoid the public works conditions number 9, 11H, and 13. If anybody's in attendance would like to make a comment on any of those four items, I'd ask you to come forward and give your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing no one for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll reconsider, or excuse me, reconvene for our regular meeting at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. Today is December 8th, and I will call this meeting to order. We do have the four of our commissioners, our four of the members of the board here present, so pursuant to city code 62210, we'll proceed with conducting the business of the city of Mount Juliet. So I'll start off by saying my name is James Mans, Mayor of Mount Juliet, and I just wanted to take this opportunity and thank you all for being here in attendance. Tennessee State law gives every citizen the right to come to these meetings and observe how the business of the city is done. So with that, we'll be taking, we'll be processing through our agenda. If you need some, they're in the wire baskets up by the doors, and if you're following along online, the city agendas can be found online as well. So with that, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is to formally set the agenda that we have before us tonight. And I'm going to start off with suggesting a change, if there's no objections to it, which would be to put 8A, B, C, D, 9A, and 9B, which is essentially everything before new business, and move that to consent. Commissioner Layton?
It's a little confusing on 8A versus B, C, and D, because 8A references somewhere that's nowhere near the B, C, and D location.
Okay, we can read these separately, then.
And I'm sure it's a mistake, but it's still on the listed that way on the agenda.
210, or 212 Paul Drive?
Yeah, that, and the other, the other three are Watermark.
That's, I bet that address backs up to the other side of that parcel.
Well, it comes off of Bass.
Yes, which is probably the other side of that parcel, now that I think about it.
Okay, on the map, it looks like it's way far.
It's a big, it's a big parcel.
Okay, so that actually, is that correct, then? The address?
It's, yeah, our attorney says that is the official 911 address of that parcel.
Oh, okay, well, if it's correct, then that's fine.
Yeah, it's a big piece of land.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I was suggesting 9A, excuse me, that was one of them. I'll do it, read it in order. 8A, B, C, D, and then 9A and B. So it's a total of four, six items. So everything that's not 10 or later was my suggestion.
So to confirm, that's 8A, B, C, and D, and also 9A and 9B?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're setting the agenda here, but we can't have outbursts from the crowd, though. But we are setting the agenda, and we're talking about moving six items to the consent, which is 9A, B, C, D, and 9A and 9B. It's the, it's the, so, and I'm not hearing an objection to that. So with that objection, we will move those to consent. We also have another ordinance here that's been laid at the table, and this one is an ordinance to amend, ordinance 25, 202505, to extend the sunset date until December 31st for the food trucks. I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this into the agenda for consideration tonight, if there's no objections on doing so. All right. We'll place this at the heel of the agenda before the appointments. All right, all in favor of the agenda as modified, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The agenda is set, so at this time, I'll ask our city manager, if you would, sir, please lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Yes, sir. If everybody will bow your heads with me, please. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, sir. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the November 10th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion? A motion and second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The minutes do pass. Now we're at the point number five on our agenda, which is citizen comments. So I'm going to open up the floor here for anybody who would like to make comments. I would just ask that you give your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to city business as much as possible, but at the beginning of the name, please give us your name and address for the record, and please address all your comments to the mayor. If necessary, I will ask somebody to address any comments on the side. However, the board is under no obligation to respond to questions, and please avoid the use of inappropriate or profanity or any other inappropriate conduct while we have citizen comments. So that, I'll open the floor. Name and address, please.
Rocky Lee, 16604 Central Pike.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm back, guys. Like I told you, we started a little watchdog committee. It's getting bigger and bigger, and I just want to thank everybody that let me speak again. And on behalf of a large concerned citizens, I guess I've been the spokesperson. As I mentioned in the last meeting, we've done this, and what we've done is for, is we don't want to get anybody fired. We don't want to be telling nobody. We just want to bring some stuff to your attention. And what we're striving for is three things. One is accountability, transparency, and communication. And with that being said, the committee asked me to follow up on the evaluation process for the city manager, and I know it's on the agenda today, but what we'd like to see done is every city employee goes through the evaluation every year. And with this being the highest paid person on the employees thing, hitting us for about $300,000, we think, you know, it's just due process that we do evaluation on the city manager, make sure he's doing his job. And what we'd like to see is the Board of Commissioners do it, and then we'd like to see the citizens online get to vote on it. That way, you put them together and you see what kind of job your city manager's doing, because right now, there's no evaluation and no accountability there. That's one thing we'd like to see. And another we'd like to address is we started digging in, and ever since I've been here, when I'd bring up the position, whatever, when I was asking somebody, they say it's the charter. Everything's charter. We can't deviate from the charter. Well, if you look on section 2-25 or 27, it says the city manager shall live within the city limits of Mount Juliet. You know, 15 years, they ain't lived there. So it's just something, we think, it just makes sense that the city manager lives in the city, because every decision he makes is affecting the property of the city and the citizens, but it doesn't him. If he asks for a high property tax, he moves, he goes out, he's county, that doesn't affect him. So how does he get in real management here if he doesn't live here? It's just like you five. You have to live here, there's a reason, and it just makes sense. And that's what we're trying to bring to your attention. You know, that stuff there that just kind of gets just sent through, you know, it's just swept away, and I'm sure this will probably swept away. But another thing I wanted to ask is, you know, like I told you, I was here 25 years, 14 years department head. This year, July, we're supposed to open up the activity center. We spent two and a half million dollars on our activity centers, supposed to have been open in July, August, and last time I saw, it's still sitting empty. It's still got, it's got the heat on for a year now. It's got the electricity on, the water's on. Why is that thing still sitting empty? Why aren't we not utilizing it? It's for a year. We spent two and a half million dollars, and it's sitting there. I also spent that several thousands of dollars to bring a teen center. Meeting room, I was supposed to be a teen center. I got thousands of dollars invested in that. It's supposed to have been open in July.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the Board of Commissioners? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Jay Easter with Reagan Smith. We're here to represent items 10C and 10D, and just wanted y'all to know that we're here with the development team when you begin discussion, if you have any questions for us.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robin Eeks, in Olive at 56 West Colville Street. I have a question that I would like to address to the commissioners first. Mr. Sellers was supposed to present a letter from RJ Corman that he had permission, excuse me, to have the runoff water, the storm drains, and the parking. And this was supposed to have been submitted to y'all before this meeting. And so without, if, we were told by the city that they have no thing on record that has been presented. So without that, how are we to go forward when that was exactly what they said in the letter? And I will tell you that is on item 13, page 99 on the agenda. So we're not going to answer that question?
Well, I was just, I was, you still have time if you would like.
Oh, okay. So that's my question. Before we can even go forward with this and bring any more questions, we need to know whether Mr. Sellers has that letter from RJ Corman, and it specifically said RJ Corman, not the other thing that he got where he was okay to clear the land only. He wasn't giving the right of way, which he needed from RJ Corman. And if he doesn't get this, he's going to be another 40 spaces short. He's already 60 spaces, parking spaces short, which is going to put him at 100 parking spaces short. And I want to know how we got to this point in the first place, why we're even having a meeting if we do not have this letter. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Martin, I'd asked you about this, and you said you had a, on number, referring to item number 13 under engineering, which is provide written confirmation from RJ Corman that parking stormwater runoff is allowed to encroach in the railroad right away before project is presented before the BLC. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. As I understand, they do have that document, Mayor.
Okay.
Right. But I will, I'll defer to them and their team.
Okay. Is there anyone else to address the Board of Commissioners? Yes, sir.
Lifelong resident. We were told that the city, they responded back and said they had no knowledge of a letter from RJ Corman. But we'll get on with this right here. I'm working off of what the planning set up there. First of all, they said that all of them was, all of these are 40 across from where he's proposing the two five-story buildings. Also, just 47 right here is all 40. That means he's setting it down between, I believe the proper term for it is spot gum, right? They don't meet the criteria. They went as for variance on the setback. They want to write two five-story buildings set in between two residential, right on the road. They want a height variance. Basically, you're setting that Mount Juliet Denny's West down in a neighborhood. Denny's North, excuse me. They fall short on the parking. Y'all's standards for the playground is 30,800 square feet. They're asking for 3,500. That's a pretty good size here. Like I said, they short on the parking. They want to park on the street. They want to bring it all the way out to the edge of the road, but they want street parking. And the engineer of the traffic guy says that they want a wide West Callwell to 24 feet. But if you're going to do that right there and let him put his two five-story buildings on the side of the road, where's that 24 feet, that extra footage coming from? The blast. I'm 100 feet. My front step's 100 feet from where he wants. My front steps a hundred feet from where he wants those two five story buildings. I'm directly across the road. I don't know about y'all, but I hadn't seen anything around here that could be built without blasting.
Sir, thank, thank you for your comments.
Is that all my three minutes?
Yes, sir. Goes quick sometimes.
I'm Zach Atwood and I live at eighty-nine A West Caldwell Street here in Mount Juliet since nineteen sixty-six. West Caldwell, Third and Fourth Avenue are one lane streets. When we meet our neighbor, one of us will pull to the side to let the other pass. Residents of Caldwell neighborhood are mostly on acre lots or more. I was devastated and sickened to hear a proposed five story apartment building with two hundred and twenty apartments and a commercial building on less than a five acre lot. And we all know that two hundred and twenty units, you figure two adults per unit, that's four hundred and forty people. Four hundred and forty people that's going to be driving cars. They've got to park. No one in this room would want me to come into their existing neighborhood and buy up three or four houses and propose an apartment building. There are all kinds of waivers and variances that just been mentioned. We have to have a traffic light at Caldwell and Mount Juliet Road. We know we're going to have to have one at Curd. What's that going to do coming through the center of town? And in my opinion, it should be city government one oh one. You don't go into an existing neighborhood and build apartments or commercial businesses on, that's going to be using that neighborhood street. And in this case, they would be using that street quite heavily. And we're a small neighborhood. Like I say, it's been a quiet neighborhood. It's one of the best secrets in town, but it soon be long gone. And I ask each of you on this board of commissioners to vote this down. We want to save West Caldwell Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have a comments for the commission?
Rick Stackenwald, I live at eighty West Caldwell. Sorry. And I have wonderfully prepared notes that I left at home. But I don't have a, a problem with the development per se, the location. A thousand percent against. I think it's just too much and too small a space. I did very little research on it, but the average in Tennessee is two cars per household. We don't have anywhere near enough space for that, just for average. And I'm guessing these are going to be the plans that I've seen. It looks like very nice apartments. So I think you're going to have at least that much. I figure three people per apartment, so you're talking about six hundred and sixty people. People going to school. The quickest way to get to the high school and the elementary school is heading out to division over to fourth. So my guess is maybe this goes through with the widening on the first part of Caldwell. But eventually you're going to have to do that whole road, which is another two thirds of a mile at, I forget what it was, about two million dollars a mile. And that's all probably going to fall on the city to do that. Going to need another stoplight at division. And this is just, my guess is what might happen. So I don't think there's been enough thought put into the long-term traffic situation. You know, they, somebody already mowed down the stop sign at, at Third Avenue just a couple of days ago. So probably one of the trucks. But when you figure the additional traffic, people taking kids to school, delivery vehicles for all those people. I don't see enough parking spaces even for an average type situation. The playground is so small. Something I thought of today, I don't see enough space to walk pets. It's a lot of people with pets, assuming they allow pets in the building. There's not a lot of green space. So it just seems like there's so many issues. It's just too much for that area. And we just, and a few other things, a few places, when I was reading through some of the city development statements, it said it's supposed to be harmonious with the neighborhood. And I don't see where anybody in here could believe it's harmonious at all with anything that we've got there. So just my thoughts, but I just, I hope that the city would put some time into thinking about the long-term implications. And who's going to pay for that? Because I hate for it to be us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else to address the board? I'll just point out, unlike the planning commission, this is, we don't take comments generally at the item when they're considered. So if you have a comment to make, this is your opportunity to be guaranteed, an opportunity to address the board.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
I'm Michael Larson. I live at fifty West Caldwell. And I'm really opposed to this, uh, that's going to, Mr. Sellers is trying to tend to do. If he don't live in the neighborhood, he really don't have an idea at all what kind of traffic situation he would be causing with all that. I've lived here sixty-one years all my life, from a two lane road to gravel road on pace lane. And you know, from one little elementary school to now what we have. And if we keep on going, the, the, this was a nice little town. I feel sorry for our police officers and our first responders. You keep putting more on them all the time. I don't know how they can keep up with all these big buildings, all these people coming in here. I just wish that he would reconsider and maybe put it in his subdivision. If he wants to have all this mess, why don't he reconsider, maybe put it in another area, maybe in Lebanon or, I don't even know where he lives. But we don't need it out here in Mount Juliet. We got so much going on Dollar Store, Tate's Lane, uh, South Green Hills. We got more houses going on. We know what to do with that here. How are we going to feed everybody? How are we going to get around? But I just want to apologize for being, you know, maybe saying something, but I think it's just a disgrace to this town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Yes. Hello.
How are you?
No.
Um, I'm Meredith Barry Hill at one zero four nine Watermark Way. And we back up to the new development that's being proposed. And we just had a couple of concerns in regards to drainage. And we have all gone through the Elliot's Reserve nightmare that's happening. And we're concerned about the blasting and then especially our tree line that's behind there. I know that, um, what's proposed is a twenty foot buffer between the subdivisions, but it looks like it's being taken onto fifteen. And we're well aware from neighbors on the Elliot's Reserve side that the developers have gone far into their own property, taken trees down. Um, I know there's a pool that's cracked up there in regards to blasting. And so we just need to know maybe assurances as to, you know, who's concerned about the tree line? Who's concerned about the drainage? We've had to have French drains put into our, uh, we have two in the front of our yard and as well as the backyard. Because the drainage that the developer didn't take into account when he first developed. So we're concerned being downhill from that, where's that water coming? Because our yard's already flooded. I mean, we're on flat land and our yard flooded, you know, the first two weeks that we were there. Our patio had four inches of water on it. And that's coming from down the hill. We're not talking directly behind us. So we're very concerned about what's, what type of, you know, solution is involved in the drainage there. And so I guess, you know, there's a couple of us here from our neighborhood, but we're, we're just, you know, wanting to know who's going to talk about that and who's going to provide assurances with that. And keeping that buffer at, you know, twenty feet between the subdivisions is important to us, just for that tree line that we have back there. So, thank you.
Raises a good point with this being a variable lot subdivision. And it's almost like the variances we're talking about with drainage versus, and mainly, I don't know if this is for attorney or our planner. John, we grab, because we put this on consent, so I just want to make sure on the concerns that were addressed. I know, I know the blasting, there's not much city can do with blasting. We get nasty grams from the state if we try to. About this buffer questions on these things is with this being basically straight zoning being a variable lot subdivision. Do we have any, is this, this, it's almost like it's asked for a variance in a sense. Is this a staff decision?
No, no, no. This would be subject to any buffer. This would be subject, it's zoning district to zoning district. So, um, RS, whatever Nicholsville is, whatever the code requires.
They've got to meet the code.
Got to meet the code despite the variable lot.
Because they were some, it was something, I believe in the staff report that mentioned requests. And it being a straight zoning, I was like, we don't get a say on that. It's just following the code, correct?
Bulk, it would, yeah. Would, they did not get, they can't ask for the same waivers, the bulk waivers that you would ask for in a pod. They actually went before the board of zoning appeals to ask for this increased yard area, which was denied.
Okay, so that was denied at the board of appeals. Okay. That's, yeah. And would you mind connecting with, with the, with the young lady that just, just spoke? And just make sure everybody's on the same page. So, or is there anyone else to address the board of commissioners?
Get your mic on there. My name is Bob Heatherly. And I live at sixty-three West Caldwell Street. And the first thing, uh, my constituents and myself would like to know is where we can get a copy of the letter from the railroad. That's the first thing we'd like to see. Secondly, I don't live right on the main drag, but I do feel sorry for my neighbors. Not going to be able to see the sunshine all day long for a building a hundred feet from their house. That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever when there's no infrastructure to support this project start with. The city is behind on their schooling. What are you going to do with two or three hundred school children in the neighborhood? I bought that property back down there thirty-two years ago because it was a twenty mile an hour speed zone. That's where I raised my kids. That's the reason my neighbors also bought, because it was a safe neighborhood. Now put two hundred and twenty apartments there and you're going to devalue every piece of property that somebody owns in that subdivision. Now I don't know if anybody's prepared for that whatsoever, but we're talking about lots of money on every piece of property that's owned on that subdivision. So with that being said, the schools need to be given serious consideration before we'd ever do anything like this in what is supposed to be the historic part of Mount Juliet. Let's don't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen Quinn and I live in, uh, Professor Caldwell's original house, who I'm sure is turning over in his grave as we speak. When we talk about the crime that's going to be from apartment complex, the blasting, all the traffic, it's just on and on. And we're the original neighborhood in Mount Juliet with houses. One of them, Ivan L. Smith's house was built by the same builders as my house, which is a hundred and twenty-five years old. You don't come by those very easily in Mount Juliet. And to destroy the ambiance and the charm that is left in this neighborhood, the original neighborhood is an absolute disgrace. And not to mention, uh, you know, Mr. Sellers talks about what he's put in to buying all that land. But nobody's talking about what we, I gutted my house. I have spent, uh, I don't, won't even say how much money on that house. And, and so has everybody with an old house. I mean, you know, and to destroy the original neighborhood in Mount Juliet, like I said, is, and it will be destroyed by that horrendous five story building plopped in the middle of a small, and it's not a residential section, by the way. It is a neighborhood where we know each other and we're really truly neighbors. We don't have an HOA, uh, telling us what to do. We take care of our property as best as we possibly can. And we spend everything that we possibly can on it. And to destroy basically our lives that, that we spent there is, it's mu- so much more than just about money. It's, it's about, we are the gem and the treasure actually of Mount Juliet being the original neighborhood. I know I've spent more than three minutes.
You got twenty-seven, there's a counter on the screen over here.
Okay. Well, I can't think of anything else to say, so thank you.
Understand. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Boils. I live at sixty-four West Caldwell Street. I'm kind of new to the neighborhood. I've only been there since ninety-six and I have seen some very nice neighbors do some great things there. But putting a two, five story apartment complex with shopping at the bottom, as a small business person, I cannot see businesses surviving because of their so far off the Mount Juliet, the main drag. As you can see at Charlie's Place, uh, several businesses that's come and gone already there, crossing the Christmas place. And I'm there on the weekends and the parking lot is three quarters full during this holiday season for them. Where are you going to put an extra sixty cars at? That just about fills up that parking spaces back there. How would a business enjoy having cars sitting there all the time that nobody is going in and out? I'm there from November till Christmas and the, it's getting worse and worse. The, the parking for them is just almost completely filled up. I took pictures of it Saturday on a cold day and it was three quarters full. So where is the rest of these cars going to go? Where are these, where are these customers to these businesses, where are they going to park at? And right now I think, uh, uh, the incredible Christmas place would love to have that parking lot empty for their customers. Because it is a busy time for them. And the traffic is horrendous going in and out of there, just going just from that area there with the businesses on the corner. Uh, the, the offices during, uh, the doctor's offices and all that. It's, it gets a little tough trying to turn a left out of there. You know, and I'm coming in and out there a lot. I got a lot of neighbors that are coming in and out there a lot and they can't, it's hard to manage the traffic. Will the light help? No, the light's not really not going to help, just going to bottleneck the traffic maybe all the way up to, uh, middle school. Both ways. And then with the sprouts light there not being synchronized properly, uh, letting one car out for, and blocking up hundreds more coming, coming and going. Uh, just having the, getting back to the apartments, there is going to be all kinds of extra things going on that you don't want to see, especially break-ins. We know that's going to happen and they're going to be looking for opportunities for them. And y'all think about this seriously. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Yes, sir. Name and address.
I'm Bobby Colson. I've been, I'm probably the last man standing. I've been on West Caldwell since nineteen fifty-nine. I was born there. Uh, I'm also a, a real estate broker and an auctioneer, so I know a little bit about values, property values. And this development is going to kill our property values. No question in my mind about that. Uh, all of us that have lived there and grown up there and been there. And like I said, I'm probably the last man standing. I've probably been there longer than any- All of us that have lived there and grown up there and been there. And like I said, I'm probably the last man standing. I've probably been there longer than anybody in the neighborhood now. But this thing will kill our, our property values. And we've got a little bit of old historic Mount Juliet left down there and it'd just be a shame to set it go away. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, I, you said West Caldwell, did you, did you, I didn't catch the street.
Seventy-eight West Caldwell.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
William Beasley, one-on-one, West Caldwell Street, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. I've lived in Mount Juliet since nineteen ninety. And I've noticed the big difference in the neighborhood. Like Ms. Karen there, she, her house is going down. She, in this original house neighborhood, she spent a ton of money on it. I've spent a lot of money on mine. And I just don't see how the traffic is going to be handled in the neighborhood. I was coming off of West Caldwell, Western Vision onto Fourth Avenue. And there were cars backed up across the railroad track. They were on the track. I saw it. And one of my neighbors out there taking videos, but he couldn't make it tonight. And I couldn't believe it. I said, what in the world? I mean, if this development comes, then what's going to happen? So it's going to be a lot of expense like down South Green Hill Road. Something similar to that to keep people off the railroad track. That's going to be real good money for the city, I assume. I don't know. It's a city street. Then the red light on North Mount Juliet Road in West Caldwell. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. So we, we, we're in an area here that's just, it just don't make sense. And speaking of traffic, I think I stated there were eleven children in that neighborhood. No, I was wrong. There's fifteen. There are fifteen children. And they're all precious. They're sweet children, good people, good neighbors. And to have this traffic problem, it's not handled now. The cemetery, people taking shortcuts through the cemetery to beat the traffic. And if you can do that, that's good. That's, that's cool. And, but it's, they're, they're screaming by my house. I live on dead, there's a dead end sign on the road. Dead end. It's not dead end. It's going through the cemetery. So we need some help there. Now, we need help on that, but in the future, if this development goes through, I don't know what's going to happen. Uh, maybe you guys figure it out. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Yes, sir. Steven Heckendorf, three nine three Page Drive. So with this, with this project, a couple of different things I had, as I'm hearing everybody and researching it. I'm not sure exactly why the developer couldn't purchase more land for this. Obviously he's running, I think into problems because people don't want to sell the land. But you look, you look at the property across railroad tracks, those two parcels that have been sitting there for quite a bit of time and the value on these properties, just by setting this up, it's a massive windfall in dollars. I think I have a problem also with another traffic light, at least if I read that right. Another traffic light after the railroad crossing. And then we're going to have another traffic light on Curd Road. So we're talking in the span of that distance, we're going to have three traffic lights. There, then you, then you have exiting from that area. You can't even exit from the Jersey Mike's area. There, it's insanely, you have traffic backed up already from that light in front of it. I'm just not even sure. I'm sure we can, we have great traffic and traffic folks. I'm sure we can try to, to time all these lights right, but you can't stop people who are your back-to-back lights that even, even down in Providence, your lights I think are more spanned out than those three would be. I, you would have to, I would have to measure that. Just all I had to say, I, I just, I know we talked about the density factor. And I, and I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily going to step up here, but one of the things that I was talking to Commissioner Malley about was we don't always have two bifurcated options. We don't have to only look at revenue from building and monies that they'll give us from building or increase property tax. We can also look at managing with the monies that we have. And making sure that the developments, I mean, could you see that there could be two-story townhomes there? Or something of the nature which kind of meshes with the, with the community that's already there? I just think that trying to build the apartment complex and mirror the other side of the street where it doesn't even touch Mount Juliet Road, I don't know. I, I just, I cannot fathom that this is something I'll be go through. I'm not sure. I'm curious to hear what your thoughts. Obviously that's the hard part about commenting before is because I don't really know where everybody is on this. And on top of that, I just don't know how it's also I'm, I'm not sure why it was moved consent agenda. And I'm, I'm curious to hear how that will play out. But, but yeah, so that's just my thoughts on it.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else to address the Board of Commissioners?
Hello, my name is Jason Wright. I didn't say anything else.
Address, please.
Address fifty-eight West Caldwell Street.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. I just wanted to say, I've been here, well, my family's been here over a hundred and fifty years. And we've been in West Caldwell since I was in sixth grade in eighty-four. And I just hate, I know, I know things are going to grow. I know it's going to be that way. But to see this stuff coming through and just slamming crap in here left and right. I just hate to see a neighborhood like ours just being quiet. I dreaded moving or thinking what it's going to be like. People moving in. I know they're going to move in. That's fine, but it's still quiet down in West Caldwell. I just hate to see it grow to just slamming people in here. And I don't know. It's just, I know people got to move places. I understand that, but just to throw things up everywhere. I just hate to see that. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else to address the Board of Commissioners? Just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity that wishes to speak, to speak. All right. Seeing none, we will close citizen comments. We will move on to commissioner reports and comments. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Giles for his comments. Sir, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say something about the Christmas Light Walk. It should be on our monitor somewhere. Which will be this coming Monday. For those of you who have never been, it's really a great event. It's sponsored by the BPAC. We've got several of the city staff that goes and helps us from PD and just, just many departments. And I know that Commissioner Malley may say something about it too, but I just want to invite you to this. At six o'clock, we start at Willoughby Station. We walk to see Christmas lights. If you've never truly walked to see them, it's a different perspective. Mount Juliet High School band will be playing, starting a few songs before we walk. And so, and also Dunkin' Donuts are sponsoring refreshments for us out there. Appreciate Marty Potts and anyone else from the city for securing that for us. They did last year if I'm not mistaken, and it was great. It snowed last year while we were doing it. So as much as I enjoyed that, I hope it doesn't snow while we're out there this year. But anyway, invite you and hope you'll come to that. Also for those from Nichols Vale or maybe watching on TV, I have called a town hall meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock PM at the old courtroom in the old police building overall from Charlie Daniels Parkway. And that is to address the blasting that is going on right now. Not that we can do a whole lot about it. I know our mayor had referred to that earlier. We can't. But I just wanted to know that we care and we do. And we're going to address some things tomorrow night. The state's going to be there. And I think the meeting is going to be very positive. I appreciate our departments again for helping our, our fire chief and, and several people that's going to be there tomorrow night and the calls they've made and get everything together. So I think it's going to be a very productive meeting tomorrow night. And I guess we're talking about Christmas and this is sort of personal in a way, but I just want to congratulate my youngest son, Josh, and his wife Kirsten. They were on the, the recent Hallmark movie called A Grand Overture Christmas. And I know a lot of people has watched that and, and it seems like my wife and I are watching Hallmarks. I guess it's, it's showing my age, isn't it? But we're watching a lot of Hallmarks, but it was just, I just wanted to congratulate them. They, they're here in Mount Juliet work here and stuff. And so anyway, and, and then dealing with Christmas, I want to wish everyone a safe and Merry Christmas this year. And thank you, Mayor. That completes my comments.
Thank you, sir. We recognize our Vice Mayor for his comments next.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the people coming out tonight. I tell you, it's great to hear everyone's concerns. You know, I was up here taking a lot of notes because there's a lot of different topics. And so I do want to cover as as many as I can back with the developers. I will say, welcome Ms. Hamlin over here. It's great to see a new face. I do miss, miss Luckett. Hopefully she's not watching tonight. Hopefully she's at home enjoying whatever she's doing. But it is kind of a little strange up here. Congratulations to all the officers this Friday. I'll, I'll tell you. It was amazing to see all the awards that were handed out amongst all the men and women that, that protect our street each and every day and every night as we go to bed. We live in the best city. We live in the safest city and and I'll tell you, with these stats that were given out on Friday, it was pretty impressive between all the different arrests, the you know, the life-saving calls to the amount of drugs and weapons that come in through our city from our surrounding communities. I'll tell you, these officers do an amazing job and thank you all for your services that are out there. Also want to welcome some of the new officers. I actually swore in two officers at that event as well. So welcome them officers and thank them for their services. Let's see here, as we move on down to the, to the Christmas parade, December thirteenth is Saturday at eleven AM. So for the folks that are going to be out there, please go ahead and make sure the, the families get set up a little bit early. Hopefully the weather is going to be nice and we do have a backup plan for Sunday, but we will keep it dry on Saturday unless we get snowflakes. Like Commissioner Giles was saying out there, so that, that'd be nice to have a white Christmas. I don't know about for Public Works, but I know they're shaking their heads over there. It's okay. Thank you to, to Two Rivers Ford for the trucks and welcome Barry Wellmore for the Grand Marshall. As well as thank you for all the other sponsors that are out there. It's always great to see all the local businesses and franchises taking time and energy to also sponsor this event. Christmas lighting competition for the folks that are out there tonight. I'm also a part of the Parks Board. So they're out tonight looking at some of the different Christmas lights for the folks that did submit their homes and their businesses. So I'll be finishing up on that tomorrow night. But good luck to all the contenders. One more thing here, because there was a resident that came in tonight that was very adamant about the teen center and all that money that we're spending. And I just thought it was a great opportunity for me to at least highlight for the residents that are here tonight. The reason why that is not open or wasn't open, it was because we had the new police department that was being built. And with all the construction and they were repaving that area, we were thinking safety first. It's not about just opening it up and not being ready. We wanted to make sure it was fully ready, ADA compliant, as well as making sure that the students and residents can get in there safely. So yes, we are about safety. And then the, the watchdog folks, I'd love to be able to hear more about what they have out there, but this commission up here is all about transparency and communication. That's a few things of what we're really excited about. And this commission is very adamant about that. So appreciate everyone. Merry Christmas to all the families that are out there. And Happy New Year. Please be safe as you guys are traveling. And one last thing, shop local. This is what keeps our taxes down for all the residents that are investing back in our local businesses. There's a lot of families out there that are, you know, starting new businesses as well as keeping the ones that are out there existing. You know, we got to make sure we keep that revenue in the city of Mount Juliet. And we're very blessed to have a lot of different options when it comes to some of these stores. So thank you all for what you do each and every day. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We will recognize Commissioner Malley for her report and comments. Recognize for five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. So yeah, like Commissioner Giles said, we have on BPAC, which is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I serve on that board, that committee as the board representative and Commissioner Giles chairs that committee. And we are all about connectivity through bike lanes and sidewalks and, you know, walkability and healthy lifestyles. So we have an annual Christmas, Christmas Lights Walk and like he said, and so please come out. Last year it did snow, which it was cold, but it made it a little more magical, I thought. So, but it was still fun. So please come out for that. And again, yeah, our parade is this Saturday. And also again, thank you for Ford for loaning the trucks. They're always so nice, those nice big trucks. And let's see. I was going to say, address something that happened at the last meeting, but I'll wait till next time. So just want to wish you a Merry Christmas and be safe and Happy New Year. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we recognize our city manager, I'll just, from our, from my comments, I'll just say Merry Christmas to everyone. I hope you get to spend a lot of time with your family. Enjoy that as however you see fit, but just, just cherish every moment you can get with your family. As mine, I've officially become an empty nester this year. I know how important it is for me to get everybody together. So I just wish everybody the merriest of Christmases and of course a Happy New Year. We will not be meeting at the second meeting of the year, which is I believe would have fallen on the twenty-second if I'm not the second meeting of December is what I'm trying to say. We will not be meeting them. We will not have a quorum present, but we will meet again on January twelfth. And with that, I'll recognize our city manager. Sir, you are recognized for ten.
Now, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Thanks, as always, for our citizens coming out tonight. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces. I was sitting here, taking some notes. And I was thinking that thirty-six years ago, Mr. Atwell, I think he may, he may still be in the back or he may have left. He was like the fourth or fifth officer here. He was my training officer thirty-six years ago. There was a total of seven or eight officers with the police department. So it tells you a little bit of how your city's changed since then. Ms. Quinn, I don't know if she's still here or not, but I remember her sitting in her driveway many a day writing tickets along West Caldwell Street and wrote quite a few of them too. Might have actually wrote some people in this very room possibly. If I did, I apologize to you, but that was a long time ago. But it's always good to see a lot of familiar faces and I can assure you, we understand your concerns. Mr. Terry back there in the back, one of the finest men I, I know. He works extremely hard for one of our local civic organizations, just an all-around good man. He had asked a question about the parking. It is up to the developer to provide any documents to the planning department. If they're short on parking, that would require variance for which city staff can't give it, can only be the planning commissioner and Board of Commissioners. And so they would have to supply that. They'd have to meet parking requirements. I hope that gives folks some comfort that regardless of what they have today or don't have today, they would have to have those documents before they're able to move forward with any type of development, this development. And that has been made clear to the developer. Prayers go out to a local family here in Mount Juliet that was, I think a total of seven, seven or eight, you may have read about it in the news. Unfortunately, there was a fleeing motorist out of Nashville that struck this local family that we're very familiar with. Many of us in this room. Some of them are still recovering. Sadly, somebody lost their life in that crash. So I encourage everybody to please wear your seat belts and things that you don't think about in an automobile and in particular pickup truck. Is anything greater than probably five pounds of weight unrestrained in your vehicle in the interior or exterior, be it the bed of the truck is basically a projectile moving forward if you were involved in a head-on crash. It's little things that people don't think about. But it's something I never forget about. The most deadly thing anybody in this room will do is not actually handling a weapon. It's actually driving an automobile because you're It's actually driving an automobile because you're trusting your lives for the lives of somebody else. Normally two yellow painted lines across from you. So we pray for you daily because as I always say, in this room, every meeting, our, our, our city is just a place on a map without the people that call it home. So God bless you all and most importantly, we will get that light looked at. I think our engineers are here tonight. It sprouts to make sure it's operating properly. And most importantly, shop in local. If you don't do it for any other reason other than the fact that it's convenient, most importantly, do it out of selfishness because that keeps your taxes low and those monies go to fund the wonderful departments that we have in this city. They're not all here tonight. They know who they are, but every actual city department in this city is absolutely phenomenal. Goes above and beyond every day and it's a direction of the board of commissioners and the elected body here. Thank you for all that you do and Merry Christmas to everybody and God bless.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. With that, we'll move into the business portion of the agenda. I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow our police chief to make a quick presentation. Without objection, is there any objections to suspension of the rules? Hearing none, sir. The floor is yours.
All right. I won't take up too much of y'all's time, but I appreciate y'all making it out to our award banquet and all the messages of support for our team. We were able to honor over 100 officers for different awards from life-saving to meritorious awards, to those different officers of the year and whatnot. But who couldn't make it was our city manager Kenny Martin, who is a former police chief. And when I became police chief, I learned that Kenny really didn't get a true honor when he retired from the police chief role. So we wanted to honor you at the award banquet. You couldn't make it. You were dealing with grandkid duty, I believe. But we got you something and I wanted to present that to you tonight. But it is just a retired police chief badge plaque made out of wood, hand carved and, and hand painted. So we wanted to get that for you so it can live on your wall and your grandchildren's walls.
That's it. You're welcome. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. But Kenny served as a police chief honorably, continues to serve the city honorably and, and always there to support us as a police department. You know, what we do a lot of today with our community policing, that started with Kenny Martin back in the early 2000s. It just wasn't a very popular thing then, but now it's a necessity that police departments have to do nationwide to maintain the trust and support of their community. So there you go. Proud of you and grateful for you. Thank you. Right. Thank you, folks.
While the rules are suspended, this is definitely going to call for a photograph and here we go. Before I suggest we go back into regular session, is there, are we still good with the agenda as published? All right. With, without objection, we'll return to regular session. Hearing none, we're back on the agenda as, as amended. I'll read the consent agenda for the record, which is items number 8A. A resolution adopting a plan of services for the property known as Tate's Landing located at 212 Paul Drive, map 73 parcel, part of 21 in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. 8B, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 10 acres of property at Watermark Way, map 73, part of parcel 21. The property being located within the city's urban growth boundary. 8C, a resolution and memorandum of an ordinance relative to the annexation of approximately 10 acres of property at Watermark Way, map 73, part of parcel 21. 8D, an ordinance to rezone property on Watermark Way, approximately 10 acres, map 73, part of parcel 21 from Wilson County, R1 to RS 20. 9A, which is affectionately known as Candy for Kids, an ordinance to accept donations for the Mount Juliet Parks Department to allocate the funds for park special events. And 9B, an ordinance to, to amend ordinance 2024-52 to grant relief for certain conditions of the previously approved plenary master development plan, last amended on November 24th to allow the full access driveways on collector roads between Golden Bar Gateway and Beckwith Road and avoid public works conditions 9, 11H and 13. Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Those six items do carry. And it's going to be a long night if I can't read headers any better than I just did. So bear with me, folks. Next item on the agenda, which is 10A, an ordinance to amend the city of Mount Juliet Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28, Article 9, Truck Routes. Have a motion. Second, Commissioner Millady, this is under your sponsorship. Would you like the floor?
Sure. Okay. The ordinance referenced deliveries, even though we have no trucks on certain, non-truck routes throughout the city, the word deliveries was giving these city officers problems is being able to enforce it. So what we did was we got with legal and PD and narrowed it down and rerouted it a little bit, amended it. And so that the deliveries were better defined and the, to give PD the teeth that they need to enforce the non-truck routes around the city. So that's basically what this is.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Are all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That does carry on first reading. The next item is 10B, an ordinance to rezone approximately 4.86 acres of property known as Charlie's Place, located on West Caldwell Street, map 721, Group B parcel two and three from RS 40 to CTC PUD and to adopt the plenary master development plan for a mixed-use development on map 721, Group B parcels 1.01, 2, 3, 4, and 10.
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay. Hearing no second, that will not be read, that will not be heard tonight. The next item is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 39.34 acres of property located at 5025 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 77 parcel one, parcel 1.03, located within the city's urban growth boundary. Is there objection to hearing a 10D at the same time? Hearing no objection to that, we'll read 10D, which is an ordinance to rezone approximately 39.34 acres of property at 5025 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 77 parcel one and 1.03 from Wilson County, R1 to CMU PUD and adopt the plenary master development plan for the courtyards at McFarland. Have a, hear a motion. Is there a second? Okay, the two items are on the table. Would anyone like the floor? Commissioner Millady, you're recognized.
Okay. This is going across, well, almost across from the current McFarland development, which is behind Valley Center. And so this is a senior community and this is one of those that we've referred to in the work session that we had. I know many of you weren't here, but it is a, it includes commercial and it would be a walkable community. So I, I think this is a great plan and I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Giles, you're recognized.
And if I'm not mistaken, it connects Old Lebanon Dirt Road with, with Division as well. And I think that's really important for connectivity, you know, so yeah. I think, I think it looks good.
Commissioner Millady?
Okay. And talking about infrastructure, McFarland is doing a lot of infrastructure corrections on Old Lebanon Dirt Road and this will connect to East Division. So can we, since infrastructure is a hot topic now, can we get traffic engineer to talk about the improvements that will come with this development? I think it'll be primarily on East Division.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that is correct. This development is being required to regrade all of East Division along their frontage to address the severe safety hazards that exist out there right now. Pretty steep drop-offs, large history of roadway departure crashes with little clear zone. We're making them grade four to one slope or flatter, dedicating right away for our future East Division widening project. And absolutely nothing in the clear zone that's not crash rated.
Okay.
And answer the question. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
And I don't know if this is going to go back to you or Storm, Stormwater, but did we get the, the situation taken care of with the, the detention pond and the potential runoff? Because I know that when this first came, it was actually something that was going to be discussed, whether if it was going to be.
We have a two o'clock meeting tomorrow with CDM Smith, who is our consultant, to discuss options.
Okay.
So I can give you a report after that.
Yeah, that'd be great because I know that's the biggest concern. Well, that's one of my biggest concerns right there. I'll have to go back on my notes to go back and see what some of the other concerns were originally. But I know the storm water and that detention pond was a concern over there, especially for, you know, for your department as well. So it'd be great to hear some more detail about it. So thank you.
We will.
I have, I have a question for someone in planning. I see, I see the someone. John, under planning, we got number 30, which is please provide information within the deed of covenants, keeping this development age restricted in perpetuity.
We'll be deleting that before.
Sorry. I, I can't hear Tim on the mic.
We can, that'll be removed before second reading.
We need to nail that down, don't we? If that's, if that's.
I don't think we're allowed. Is that where?
This is for the age restriction on that.
Oh, oh, sorry. I heard age or I hear, I, you know, you know what I'm thinking.
Yes.
I have not, I have not seen those yet.
I would just like to suggest that we, so the information be, be provided. That's going to have, we need to set a timeframe on this, like before it gets to final master development plan?
That'd be fine, yeah.
Okay. This is under, under planning number 30. I was just going, when I was going through this, I was like, I wanted to make sure we had that captured on that, that it was going to be indeed an age restricted development. That's one of the selling points. Do we have representation?
Yes, sir. Jay Easter with Reagan Smith.
Yes, sir.
That condition, it was discussed at the planning commission and I believe council recommended that it was reworded to say that we follow the HIPAA laws, which is the federal age restricted. And I believe that's how that one's supposed to be.
Yes, there is a magic number that we can only do this around. And Ms. Burnett, do you have any guidance to that on 30? If this is appropriate, good, or we need to make, consider changes?
It's just based on HOPA. So the, sorry, I'm trying, the Housing for Older Persons Act, the Older People Act.
HOPA. Okay. I thought you said HIPAA at first.
Yeah, I misspoke. It is HOPA, the Housing for.
And that's probably defined it. That's where we get that magic 55 number from?
Yes.
Do we need to add that into this or just that's the standard we're going to set for when we collect the information to make sure it's verified?
That's the standard we're allowed to adopt. It's 80% of units have to have at least one person. That's 55 and up and it's verified based on surveys and affidavits that the community does, which is all captured in HOPA.
Okay. All on the same page?
Yes, sir.
That's a.
Thank you.
That's an important element on that. Did you have anything else you wanted to present or show?
No, sir, not, I'm here to address any questions y'all have.
Anyone else need the floor? Commissioner Millady?
I'll just, real quick, just so the public knows, if you're looking at it from the south, the commercial would be on the left side. There's one main public road connecting Old Lebanon Dirt Road in East Division. All the residential parts to the right would be private streets, which takes the maintenance stress off the taxpayers. So, and that's one of the things we were talking about earlier in the work session too, our private streets.
Condition number 32, the commercial components of the PUD shall be completed before the issuance of the 75th residential certificate of occupancy.
We're in love with that condition, but I don't think we're willing to jeopardize the project over that condition.
Okay. So I'm just calling out that it says the commercial point shall be completed, so.
I have a question on that.
Commissioner, yes.
Completed, does that mean a shell? Or does that mean the inside will be completed out too? So I had, I had a question. I'm glad you brought that up because I meant to ask that question. Who, who would be the deciding person on that?
John?
I would take that as reading no CO on the commercial until that 75th CO for the residential. So they can, it would be constructed up to the point of occupancy at that point. So fully constructed is how I take it. Inside, outside, ready to be occupied.
Fully constructed according to the plan submitted.
Yes. Yeah. Like they're, they're at the point where they're seeking a certificate of occupancy.
Oh, so they're at the point where they can receive a certificate of occupancy on the commercial? Are, is your plans to design your commercial in a shell aspect where they would not, that's not going to be a CO state at that point? If that's the case?
No, it's not going to be a CO state at that point. Our plans are we are actively seeking for commercial partner to build the commercial. There are no tenants selected. So I think it would be difficult to be, have a CO or commit to a CO on commercial when there are no tenants yet.
Yeah, that was the thing, shall be completed before. And I was like, well, that we're going to get into splitting hairs over what the term completed means. But we do need to all agree on completed before this gets through second reading.
I agree. I think we need to have some more discussion about what the term complete means before second reading.
There's somebody out there watching going, how hard is this? It's completed? Are there anyone else with questions or comments? All right. Back on completed then, if no one else has anything. So you, your plan you're putting together, it shows the outline of what we're doing in terms of commercial.
Correct.
But you don't have, you, you're, your goal is to have that, that square footage available and you would want to build the interior suitable for the tenant, I suppose, or person who's.
Our goal is to have the square footage and to show that there, the potential for that amount of retail there. Find a retail partner that would either build what we have shown or have to come back for the changes if it differs and that they would build the commercial.
I will offer up, we've, we've used the language in the past, vertical. Commercial developed portion shall be vertical by the 75th CO.
That almost sounds like building the shell there.
Yes. So I mean, we could, depending on how complete we'd like this, you know. Completed to me means ready to be occupied.
Correct. And that's, I think that's what the average person listening to us talk about this is assuming as well. So it's due sometimes from the commercial space. So it's due sometimes in the commercial space, it's, it's presented as, hey, the, the curb gutter, the, the parking, the parking lots are there, the utilities are stubbed in for whatever's going to be proposed. Uh, we've made provisions for the stormwater. Everything's in place. But to his point, he doesn't exactly know who wants to be his tenant.
No, it's a timing thing. It's, it's a market thing. When the, when the road is improved, which is underway, when the development to the, across the street from us, it has more rooftops. The, the rooftops in place are going to make the site more viable and more uh, appealing to a commercial developer.
Mr. Martin, were you, were you setting forward for a comment?
Yes, yes, sir, Mayor. And I think the commission's own, thinking the right thing here. Typically it's shell, uh, in other words, moving ready. If you, if you've got a tenant, say for example, a restaurant, a lot of times the floor may be gravel because that tenant's going to come in, lay all their flooring and their uh, plumbing pipes out of the ground, depending on where the kitchen equipment's at. That's a huge expense. If you build the building up front and it's ready to be occupied by an incoming tenant, that helps us through ECD because then we can find a, say it's 1500 square foot for a sandwich place or 3500 square feet for an office. They can go into that space. It's already wired, approved by the city. The actual shell of the building itself on the outside, you won't go tell that in, on the interior, it's not done. It's got glass doors, all that in it's, it's uh, three phase electric, the whole thing. They just say per particular tenant goes in, so they don't have to have a vanilla box that they just undo and tear out.
Yeah. Well, assuming this passes on first reading, I think John maybe, you know, need to get together, maybe, maybe Sam needs to be included in that to get some language. Cause I think we need to revisit number 32 on second reading, just to make sure we, everybody's on the same page and knows what the expectations are.
Agreed.
I didn't have anything else if, unless you guys have something? Wait, ready to vote? All in favor of 10C and 10D, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes on first reading.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on the agenda is 10E, a resolution to amend the city, excuse me, to amend the city manager's employment agreement to include an annual performance evaluation and approve a performance evaluation. Have a motion? Motion and second, the item is on the table. This is under your sponsorship, Commissioner Mullally. Would you like the floor? You recognized?
So I understand there used to be some reviews for city manager and then that was stopped sometime before, two, that 2020. So we, since we are all about transparency and everything. So I know people have questions that really never get answered. So um, I just thought it was, would be a good opportunity that we start those back. And so um, I, I have in there that that would take place after budget, which um, would be prior to the second meeting in July each year. And then we would have the form, you know, to, to fill out.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So when this came out, you know, initially Commissioner, I was thinking, okay, how can this benefit all of us? Uh, to be able to make sure that we are transparent for the citizens as well as staff. Because again, I think about corporate world, right? You know, when you look at a CEO, that's kind of what our city manager is, you know, they're the ones that are responsible for all the department heads. They're responsible for the budget. They're responsible for so many different categories. And I think about this, you know, as a review, um, you know, and I'll just say this right now, um, I think I review Kenny every time I make a call to him. And I'll be transparent on that one because when I have a problem from the citizens that they call me and they have an issue, they want to discuss something or they want to ask questions. Heck, even like today, I, you know, I mean, I think I, I message our city manager at least once a day, if not a lot more than once a day. And, and if I have problems, um, that I bring them up to, you know, to them or concern. So I think I kind of review him all the times. And then of course, when we have those discussions, those, what I would call, you know, called quarterly reviews where we say, hey, how's things been going, you know? Because again, as commissioners, we got to be very careful in how we communicate. So it's always good to know what is being communicated amongst the other commissioners back to that man right there. So when I do sit down with our city manager, I ask them, hey, am I aligned with what the other commissioners are looking for too? Because it's a, it's a two-way road, right? You know, my goal is to keep our citizens' voice heard, but also at the same time, make sure that our city manager is also getting the support that he needs to be successful to, to make sure that 300 plus employees are all driving in the same direction. So, you know, when I seen this, um, I thought, okay, you know, as people are out in the audience tonight and the last couple of meetings, you know, folks were saying, hey, you know, we want transparency. Well, I'm being transparent every day. My call records are very transparent. My cell phone, I keep a third cell phone. I carry three cell phones around specifically to be transparent. If anybody wants my cell phone to pull records to see what I called this man, believe me, it's a long list. So I mean, for this right here, but I also think about the CEO side of things. And I understand government is a little bit different from private sector. So I have to also look at these things as well. But you know, accountability um, is a daily thing for our city manager. And also um, anyone that is sitting in to the deputy role, not that they're always guaranteed to fall in as the next city manager, but they still have to follow the same um, marching orders, I guess. So I do see what you're trying to bring to the table and I appreciate it very much. But in my opinion, to put something on paper for our city manager that says, hey, you're doing a great job or you're not doing a great job. You know, he's got to basically work what 45,000 citizens along with four commissioners and a mayor. That's a, that's a long marching order. And honestly, for anyone, uh, for folks that are, let's just say, um, for anybody that would be sitting in that seat, I think what it boils down to is um, you can let the air out of a balloon or the air out of a tire pretty quickly when it just, you know, when you're giving 1% of the citizens, like one of this, uh, one, one resident came up here tonight, which I don't even think is even a citizen, uh, came out just to say that they want um, to be able to have the citizens' comments, you know? This man's phone, his emails are open 24/7, 365. So if the citizens of Mount Juliet, and I'm going to repeat that again, the citizens of Mount Juliet has a problem, that man's number's public, that man's email's public. I don't want to wait until June or July to have a review. If we have a problem, I want to get to it right away. If we have a problem, I want to make sure that man addresses it and he gets it knocked out. Because I don't want you dwelling on 11 months and 29 days in order to your voice is heard. Your voice is heard that day and it's going to be addressed by the end of the week, if not sooner. If it's Kenny Martin, I can tell you right now, it'll be addressed before the end of the day. If it's anybody else, it'll be addressed probably by the end of the week. But I can just tell you right now, he doesn't sleep. I'm actually arguing with this man to go take a vacation because now he's got great staff. He's always had great staff. He needs to take a break. You know, it's all about mental health and physical health. So in my opinion, um, I hope you as a commissioner and these other commissioners and the mayor hold this man accountable um, like we all do on our cell phones and our emails and our phone calls and everything. And I appreciate you bringing this up, Commissioner. Um, I really do. But unfortunately, um, I like what we're doing right now. Where we can be able to call this man and review him every quarter, every month, every day, um, to be able to make sure that we are consistent. So um, that's just my thoughts, but I appreciate you. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, Commissioner Giles?
Yeah. I mean, I, I like the form. I had a couple of just uh, questions on number nine on this, this form. It says carries uh, out policies adopted by the board and developed by staff. Are you talking about developed by staff, the, the policies that we brought up? Is that what that meant? Or should that be which are developed by staff? I, it was just.
Attorney.
On number nine.
I think it's just saying because some policies are created by the board and some are also created by staff. We have just like, the police department has policies that the board doesn't approve. There's just different types of policies so that we're just following all of them.
Okay, okay. I understand that then. And then on number 10, provides board with up-to-date financial reports. And I have said, how often? I know we got a report, was it today or yesterday from Friday? Okay. Well, I saw mine today. Um, and I went through it, which I was very pleased to get. Um, I thought that was really good that Dana sent out. So I assume, I, I was just wondering how often um, you could put in there, you know? And then, um, and then this obviously is addressing the, the city manager, which I think that any employee should be reviewed. And myself, just, you know, coming from the corporate world, I just think that that's the way it should, should be. I mean, I was when I was working for someone else years ago. But um, shouldn't it be for all employees, not just Kenny, that we appoint? Not committee wise, but imposition wise. So right now, if I'm not mistaken, we've got a city judge and we have a city manager. Is that correct? Or is there anyone else that we appoint that is job wise?
You're right. We do have a city judge. The city judge is a little bit different though. They're not an employee of the city like Kenny is. And their duties are all laid out in our charter and our code. And the judge has to remain impartial and render decisions based on facts and law. And so by having a performance evaluation, you're kind, the judge has to consider external influences, which can really undermine the principles that they're supposed to work with. So for that reason, I wouldn't recommend it, but the board can choose to.
Well, while he may not be considered a, an employee in, in language, if he fell over there, I'll guarantee you, he's going to come under our workers' comp. It's true.
I don't know if he's actually a listed person, but I, I recognize your point.
Yeah. So I mean, to me, he is an employee, but nevertheless, it, it, if it's, if it excludes him, we should probably say why in, in bringing an evaluation for everyone. And those points that you, you brought up, et cetera. And then, and in my opinion too, that it should also include any future because there may be some other uh, people that would, that, that would fall under us instead of the city manager in the future. I know it would have to go on a referendum, but that could definitely be done if we had a majority to do that. So that was the only thing I wanted to say about it. I mean, I, I, I don't think that there's nothing to hide. So I mean, I don't think it would be bad to have a annual review for everybody. But anyway, it's just what everybody else wants to do.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I looked at this and um, I'm kind of torn on it. The concept of it, I like as it should be. I understand what the Vice Mayor is saying as well on this. Um, I'm constantly giving Mr. Martin feedback. It almost feels like this is a run before we, before we uh, before we walk on some of this. I, I really liked the way we used to do it. And I remember when I sat down with Mr. Martin and we had a, we had a, we had a form that we would go through and I would discuss it with him. I don't know that we ever filled the form out per se, but we discussed every one of those topics and went through it and gave you feedback on stuff. And I look at, I look at the form on here and I was, and this came from Tallahoma, was it?
Off the internet and Sam reworded it.
M task created it for Tallahoma.
Gotcha. Okay. We'll, we'll give them their credit then. So. But I did, I guess one question I had here is like, why would we have a different evaluation form for one employee versus the one that we, that's used in the city or, or I understand about to be adopted in the city for standard evaluations? And I don't, I don't know who can answer that. Just the way it's written? Yes, ma'am.
Well, to answer that, um, I submitted a resolution and then my understanding was Sam changed it to have it align more with the standard that the city uses. And then on the value, or was that the evaluation form?
Yes, yes, yes.
I didn't change anything about the evaluation that you sent. I just put it on Mount Juliet letterhead. It reads exactly the same and then took out Tallahoma, but I didn't change anything about.
Okay.
The evaluation.
So as far as the judge, you know, at that meeting where I tried to amend the city manager's contract or agreement at the time, and it was the mayor's suggestion to bring that back. Uh, and then also bring back the judge since we appoint him. So I had a resolution that I submitted, but Sam said that we need, need to do that uh, based on her comments that she just stated. So I did have one. Um, and yes, Kenny is always available to us and the public. I call him all the time and ask him questions and things like that. But I do have a question uh, as far as the Vice Mayor's comments. So you know, I do the same thing. So how is that actually being transparent if it's just a one-on-one conversation with the two of you? Uh, it may be something the rest of us needs to address as well. And uh, so I can't see how that would be transparent because it's just two people discussing. Um, and each of us can do it. But you know, how, how is that being transparent to the public? And also if we did it this way, the public, it would be public record, the evaluations would be public record. So right now there, there is none. So with your phone calls, there are no evaluations. They're just phone calls, right? So how would that be transparent if it's just a conversation between the two of you?
Vice Mayor?
Sure. So, and that's what I was saying earlier, which is the communication between each commissioner, right? You know, basically what we've done in the past where if we have an issue with a situation, we'll go to Kenny and address it with him. At the same time, it's also discussed, hey, you know, what are the other commissioners having the issue with, correct? You know, like we've had that, you know, like that topic where it's been an issue with, let's just say a particular topic, right? And I'm going to be very vague here, just, you know, out of respect for whatever it is. But at the same time, there's always that opportunity to discuss because we got to be careful of what a commissioner talks about, right? Between two commissioners because of sunshine law. So we do have to follow those laws as well. So if we do have a challenge where we are trying to say, okay, there's a challenge with a citizen, right? Or there is something that's out there in particular with, through a department head. There's that discussion there. And then from there, there's typically an email that's been sent out that has that topic. And that is public record as well, if it's a request. So, you know, every time that I've ever had a problem, I've always followed up with an email to be able to make sure that there is transparency there. So if I have an issue, I'll send out an email and then put it out there. So that, there is a paper trail for the discussions that I may have that I want to escalate. No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the emails are paper trails. Um, and we, like you said, we have to be careful. Now, he will send out emails to get our feedback. So we respond individually. So no one knows what that is except him, right? So I don't know how you responded and the rest of you responded, only he knows. So I don't think that's totally uh, supports your case on that. Um, the email, of course. Now phone calls, there's no public record of a phone call. It's, like I said, it's just a conversation.
Yes, sir.
And that's typical, you know, so if there's an issue where we have that phone call, there's always a follow-up email. Okay. If it's for, for myself, there is. If I, if I have an issue where me and him have escalated something, I send an email to them. You can do a public request on BuildYourVet as well, sending the things, same thing. But again, for us to go back and forth, I've even been known to call the attorney and ask the attorney's, uh, you know, specific things to get her feedback on it. Again, to make sure that I'm following the rules. So that's what we got to do in order to make sure that, you know, things are being heard, things are being trans, you know, transferred back on paper sometimes. So again, to be able to put something on, 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 on a, I guess this right here for us, how would this work right here for us to move into giving someone a one through five? Are we going to just basically sit down every quarter or every six months or a year and say, hey, this is, this is where we rate you? I mean, you know, I mean, I kind of agree. I mean, you know, I mean, I kind of agree with what you're trying to accomplish, okay? And I also see what the mayor's saying, where there's, you know, some type of checklist. But if we don't have a workshop that says, hey, these are all the goals Kenny that you got to hit, or any city manager, right? If we don't have that meeting that says, hey, all of us are sitting here having a workshop to say, hey, these are the goals that you need to hit in order to hit in a five, or above average, or excellent, or average, or below average, you're not hitting these goals. So I see what you're trying to accomplish, and I also listened to what the mayor just said, which is, it's, you know, maybe we're not ready for this page yet, but for us to be able to, you know, simply follow up with what Commissioner Hefner had talked about, which is having that workshop to be able to discuss, hey, what is the goals that this guy's supposed to hit, or the next individual, the next city manager? So that's what I'm saying here, is that currently, right now, it works for me. I don't know if it works for you, but it works for me. When I have a problem with him, then I escalate it, and I do follow up with an email. But at the last thing, though, is that as the corporate world, or in any other leadership role, we all got to know our goals, that's called KPIs, right? Key Performance Indicators, you know, for the private sector, right? We need to know those goals. So how is that man going to get a five if your goal is going to be different from mine? Mine's going to be different from his, his is going to be different from his, his is going to be different from his. That's why we need to have a workshop that says, hey, city manager, your goal for 2026 is X. And also, these six areas that we're going to hit, we all agree as a commission and mayor, that these six areas, you need to be successful in order to get a five in all five categories. Right now, we're about to give him a, a copy of something, but we're going to say, hey, you have no goals. How is that fair to him or any other city manager that's going to sit in that? I wouldn't want to go work for somebody and say, hey, you're going to be graded on something, but you don't know your goals.
Public evaluation? Once a year? And the forms that we fill out would be, we would be required to fill that out prior to July 1st each year.
I guess my, my concern on this is, the only thing I, I could publicly evaluate him on would be things that I have publicly asked him to do, or the board has publicly asked him to do. Either through resolution, resolution as a direction, or alignment with things that are in the budget, or how his responsibilities are laid out in the city charter. That would be the only things I could evaluate him on, because I couldn't, I don't think it would be appropriate to send Kenny and say, hey, there's a, it's a dead deer here on the road, and Kenny sends somebody out to get that, I mean, it's just, that's, I, I think we've got a, it's got to be things that we've nailed out by resolution to hold accountable, or workshop one. I, I don't, and I could see abuse from people as well on, it's like, hey Kenny, you need to get this one thing done for me, or got your public evaluation coming up? That's, that's concerns I have. And I, I know they would be, I know we have a public meeting, they'd be people that Kenny's held accountable to be here to publicly flog him in any way possible, in citizen comments. I don't know if that's productive to our goals as a city, to pay staff gump time to sit here through a meeting and, and set through that. But anyway, I'll, I'll yield the floor, anybody? Commissioner Malley?
Okay, just one other thing, because I call him all the time, but not everything is backed up by email. For example, I called him and asked him about the IT investigation going on. So I didn't, I don't follow that up with an email, so not everything is followed up with email. Just saying.
Commissioner Giles?
This goes back to something else, I just, just out of curiosity, and I don't know, you might want to refer this if you could, but speaking of the judge, is he a W2 or is he a 1099?
Yes.
Does anybody know Kenny? Well, I'm just wondering, it's just, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's somewhat like ours, I think we get, we get W2s, but we're not employees in the sense that I guess this HR could fire us if they chose to, that, that's, that'd apply to us. There's many people that have asked me to fire commissioners before, and I have to explain to them that, sorry, that's not how it works, that's up to the voters. So it's a different, different animal.
Fine with just calling for the vote, if you want to vote for it, fine, if you don't, fine, just call a vote. We can just put it to rest either way, we either do it or we don't.
What, oh, okay, I had thoughts on it, but
Oh, well, go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll just, just
Well, I'm not officially calling for a vote, it was just my thoughts, I don't want to, in other words, I don't want to defer.
Gotcha. Anyone else would like the floor? All right, all in favor of 10E, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The next item is 10F, a resolution approving the award of the construction contract for the Kerr Road Intersection Improvement Project at North Mount Juliet Road, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Motion second, I would, got a question from Mr. White, I think this is in your lane?
It is.
How soon will this project get started, as soon as the contract's signed?
Yeah, we'll have, likely have a pre-construction meeting, probably sometime in January, mid-January, then they'll get started after that.
Oh, well, I was going to suggest perhaps deferring this into that meeting in January, it's under Commissioner Hefner's, if it's not going to interfere with the timeline, I'm sure he would like to make some comments on it.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that has to happen before that pre-construction meeting, like they have to get all their insurance and payment bonds and all that stuff.
All right.
So they could delay it a month if we do.
All right. All right, any questions or comments? All in favor of 10F, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 10F does pass. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend ordinance 25, 2025-5 to extend the sunset date until, the header says December 3rd, 2025, I think it's supposed, which is amends the ordinance 2024-2025 Part B of the Unified Development Code of the City of Mount Juliet, known as the zoning regulations by amending Article 3, use regulations adding Section 3, 108, temporary events, uses and portable buildings to include mobile food vendors, food trucks, regulations for residential and industrial districts to extend the sunset date from December 31st, 2025 until December 31st, 2026. A motion, second, questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, and this does pass on first reading. The next items on here are two appointments. The current placeholder in 11A is, was not, is not able to be in attendance here tonight. I'm going to bring that one back on the first meeting in January, I don't think that will cause any long, long-term pain to the city. But the other one, 11B, I'd like to submit Luke Winchester's name to the board for consideration. All in favor of Mr. Winchester, please signify by saying aye? All right, Mr. Winchester is reappointed to that position number 18, and I've got a note here that says the Board of Commissioners will meet as scheduled on January 12th, 2026. Without objection? We are adjourned.